Members of the City Council, please attend the call meeting of the City Council to be held in the 6th floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM Tuesday, May 26, 2015, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Dr. Edmonds, Mr. Meeks, Mr. Moody, Ms. Simmons.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Wright.
Yes, here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. I want to ask Wanda Gill, our Director of Parks and Recreation and Leisure Services, come to the podium. And while she comes up, just introduce this item. This is a recommendation that's coming forward from the Parks and Recreation Commission, and it is in regard to the naming of that facility that we have all conveniently referred to as a pod. But we really need to get away-
Which we should stop.
Yes, we need to get away from that noble pleasure. And so, they've studied the matter and came up with a recommendation, and she's bringing that forward to you tonight.
Okay. Where is it?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor Cherry, Honorable Council. How are you all doing?
Well.
I'm so happy to report that we finally have a recommendation for a name, which is the Portsmouth Community Cultural and Sports Complex for your review and approval tonight. The Rec Commission got together, along with the Advisory Commission, and spoke to the community, had a lot of feedback from stakeholders all over. So, that is their recommendation, and I want to present that to you tonight.
Okay. How did we come up with that?
We met with the Portsmouth Recreation Commission, Recreation Commission, and also the Advisory Commission. All of them met together and kind of went back and forth with names, and also, members of the community provided suggestions, emailed, called, and gave their suggestions. So, they tried to incorporate that.
So, we got the community an opportunity to weigh in?
Yes, sir.
And the name again?
It's Portsmouth Community Cultural and Sports Complex.
Okay. And we like to abbreviate everything, so what are we going to call it?
Portsmouth Sports Complex.
Okay.
Portsmouth Recreation Complex.
All right. And that's just for information tonight, or do you want some type of-
We'd like your blessing on that. This is, you know, we-
I like to stew on that.
Yeah. And we recognize that it's going to take some time to think about.
Can we wait till next meeting? You okay with it? Y'all okay with it? If you're involved in community and gave them a chance-
We did.
Then I'll be okay with it as well, but I just want to make sure that-
The community cultural that comes before sports.
That's right. So, they wanted to make sure it incorporated a lot of different things, not just the recreation component, but the community cultural.
I hope I don't have to answer the telephone there. That's the only thing.
It's a biologue.
Okay. All right. So, you have a majority that says yes? So, we'll, we need to make some type of official vote tonight. The council meeting, maybe we can bring you up to the podium, and you can address it in front of the viewing audience there, so everybody at home will know what the new name is and how we'll go forth.
Yes, sir.
All right?
Thank you.
Before you leave, if you would just give us a quick update on the activities that have started at the complex?
Yes, sir.
Facilities that are open?
Yes, sir. May the 4th, we moved the senior program from the Clifton Road site to Portsmouth Complex. So, we're averaging between 125 and 150 seniors a day.
Good.
Today, when we went in for a meeting with the Health Department, we had them doing the choir rehearsal, so we could barely hear in the conference room with the singing. So, we have driving classes there. We have the weight room there, it's already installed, so they're using the fitness equipment. We've been doing classes, AARP driving, cooking classes, the feeding program, Bible study. We have a library, the computer lab is set up. So, all of that is in place right now. And next month, we will have the gym open about the middle or the end of June. The gym will open up for the summer, do summer programs, summer activities, basketball for the kids, tennis. All of that will be open in June.
The gym?
Yes, sir.
What about the pool?
The pool is actually ready. We had a problem with the chemicals yesterday, which we're resolving right now. The second inspection is Wednesday, so we're hoping to have that resolved then. So, we'll be open on Saturday and Sunday from 12:30 until 4:30. And all, both pools and the Splash Park will be open from 12:30 to 4:30 until June the 21st, and then June 22nd, we go into our full-time summer schedule.
June 22nd. And we're hoping to have the gymnasium open as well around that time, so it's all wide open.
Just so you know, yesterday at the Splash Park, we had 174 kids and almost 300 people at the train. We had a lot of participation, so.
That's good news. Great news. Yep, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Dr. Gill? All right. And before you take your seat, I want to let you all know that I was over at Hampton for the Human Affairs, the Office of Human Affairs Annual Meeting, and our Parks and Recreation Department was identified and got an award for-
The Corporate Citizen of the Year.
The Corporate Citizen of the Year. And so, that was great news. I mean, they do a lot of recognizing different localities and organizations that do things that impact young people in our community. And I think there was a nice clip that we put together and showed about the New Rec Center and some of the other things that we're doing here in Portsmouth for our young people. So, it was a proud moment. It was a proud moment for your mayor.
Yes, it was. Thank you.
Great job.
Our Head Start Program, we have one at Cavalier Manor, one at J.E. Parker, and we're going to also open one at the Portsmouth Complex. So, right now, we have 150 kids in that program.
Okay. Yeah, last week was the 50th anniversary of Head Start. I actually visited the J.E. Parker Center on the actual anniversary date-
Yes, sir.
And spent about an hour over there.
Thank you for that.
Yes, it was. And now, we've got, what, you said about 150?
150 children.
Okay.
Between J.F. Kane, Cavalier Manor, and J.E. Parker. Three sites. Yes, sir.
And those are three to five-year-olds?
Three to five-year-olds, yes, sir.
That's correct. All right. Thank you, Dr. Gill.
Thank you, sir.
Very good.
Your next item is a follow-up on an item that you deferred from your council meeting two weeks ago. And let me ask Meg Pittin, our Environmental Manager, to come forth. You'll recall that we had this item on for a first reading at your May 12th agenda. The Director of the Tidewater Builders Association sent a letter and came to the meeting and had some concern about a couple of elements in that. You deferred action on it and asked us to get with the Tidewater Builders Association. And we did. We met with them last week. We talked about some revisions that really are good compromises in terms of, that will have the effect of reducing some of the costs for rebuilding in a flooding situation, and also not have a detrimental impact on premiums in the long run. So, Meg, if you would just, I think we have a one-page handout for you that sort of highlights what those changes are.
You stole my thunder.
And take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Godfrey, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. As Mr. Godfrey said, we, after the council meeting, at your last council meeting, we set up a meeting with Josh Clark from the Tidewater Builders Association. He was gracious enough to change his schedule. I had a variety of meetings that day, come in and meet with Mr. Godfrey, Ms. Joseph, and myself. Mr. Baldwin came because Mr. Brusso was off. And we hammered out, we offered up three different options that we thought that would be workable. And at the end of the meeting, we all agreed, and Mr. Clark came to an agreement of the option that you have on your handout there. What we've done is, as you recall, there were some concerns about the definitions of substantial improvement and substantial damage. As we talked about, we can't remove the "from any cause" from the damage piece because that's required in the federal regulations. But what we did was, we added the phrase "from flood damages." So, for that 10-year period for substantial damage, the cumulative, we will only count that part that's flood damages. If it's a fire, a tree falling on it, car running into it, or whatever, we won't accumulate those damages. What that means is that the ICC that we talked about for flood damages, if they get cumulative over a number of years, they'll be able to get that coverage. If we had taken that cumulative completely out, they would not have been able to get that cumulative over a number of years. Certainly, if there's one flood event and they get 50% damage, they're still eligible for the ICC. But if we didn't have that cumulative and you get, you know, damage after damage after damage, we wouldn't be able to count that. And I talked to the FEMA representative in Philadelphia the day of the train wreck, and she confirmed, yeah, I said, "First of all, you guys all okay?" And she was like, "Yes." But she confirmed that we could split it that way, and we could keep that in, and we'd make our ordinance okay, and then people would still be able to get the ICC. And we explained that to Josh, and he seemed to, Tidewater Builders Association seemed to be okay with that, because certainly, if there's repetitive flood things, you want to go ahead and elevate and bring the house into compliance with today's standards. So, that was the one change for the substantial damage. For substantial improvement, what we did is, we took out the cumulative completely. We feel, certainly, we feel like people would be safer if it was in there. But we feel like with the increases to the flood insurance premiums, people are going to get to the point that they're going to need to increase their, you know, their elevation or whatever on their own anyway, because the flood insurance premiums are going up. That's a federal thing. That's not anything that we can affect on a local level. That's happening no matter what. So, what you have in the updated ordinance are those changes that you see in the handout there. And again, what that means is that for cumulative improvement, we won't be tracking those things that are not more than 50% in one event. Somebody's replacing a roof, siding, windows, any of those things, we won't be tracking those improvements on structures in the flood zones. We'll only be tracking if it's a one-time event, if they're going to go and elevate, you know, do improvements to the entire structure. And again, Mr. Clark was okay with that. That's in line with what they have in the other cities locally. So, we would like to recommend that council approve the first reading of the amended ordinance tonight.
Because we deferred it last meeting. We didn't do the first reading, right?
Correct.
So, tonight will be the first, and we'll bring it back up the next meeting for final.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, we would like to recommend that you approve the first reading.
Okay.
Mr. Godfrey invited Mr. Clark to come back and speak, so if he chooses. I don't see him yet, but he may come. And again, he was, you know, it was a relatively brief meeting, but we sort of got a pretty good meeting of the minds all pretty quickly.
Yeah, he sent the letter.
He sent us a letter recommending endorsing your compromise.
Excellent. Excellent.
Okay. Very good. Thanks, Meg.
Yes, please. The next item on the agenda is an item that's on your regular agenda tonight. It's the only new item on your agenda. It's in regard to realigning the classification of funding for fiscal year 15 for the schools. And we have Chairman Bridford here, and Chris Steele is here.
Dr. Bracy's here, too.
And Dr. Bracy is here.
Yes.
So, we had met with them last week or the week before. And, yes, it was earlier last week. You'll recall, we had gotten a letter from the chairman following their May 7th meeting asking for realignment of the expenditures. We didn't have time between that Friday morning receipt of the letter and the, you know, the agenda that was on the next Tuesday, which was May the 12th, to get it on that agenda. So, we knew it was going to be on this agenda. And then, we met with them last week, and early last week, they knew that they were going to ask for an additional realignment at their meeting on Thursday, May 21st. And so, we have that one as well. And so, what you have before you is a combined realignment of both the May 7th request and the May 21st request. And let me ask Judy if she would sort of introduce it, and then we would welcome the input from the schools as far as an explanation for how those expenditures are going to be made.
Yeah. For purposes of tonight's vote, as Brandon said, we've combined the two resolutions into one ordinance for tonight. So, the ordinance you will be voting on will approve both the resolutions that they've submitted. As you know, at the beginning of the fiscal year, they appropriate to certain categories their funding based on what they think they're going to need. Now, we're getting towards the end of the year, and they have some projects that they would like to buy or purchase out of certain other categories, so they're requesting some adjustments. So, if you look at the ordinance, there would be a decrease of the instruction line by $6,691,495, and then, the rest of the categories will have increases. There'll be a $50,000 increase to administration, attendance, and health, $110,000 to people transportation. Operations and maintenance will have a $2,635,864. The debt and fund transfer is an increase of $895,631, and the technology is an increase of $3 million. So, as you said, the first ordinance was for various projects that they'd like to do. The second ordinance was for them to pay off their debt to Ameresco, to pay it off this fiscal year, so that those monies would be available for next fiscal year. So, they have graciously agreed to be here tonight, so if you have any specific questions you'd like to ask them, they can explain in further detail.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Steele?
Dr. Bracy's here, too.
If you could come up real quick. Mine's is simple, but I want to make sure that... I'm sorry, Mr.... Dr. Bracy, yeah. The categories here, as we settle out, we've had a good year, two years under this new methodology. Is it safe to assume now, by the end of this fiscal year, that once we've got these numbers in these categories, the fluctuations will be a lot less going forward? Or are these one-time opportunities that you'll still see some of the fluctuation? I mean, I understand the technology and things like that. You always need to move some things, but I was more interested in hoping, as we move forward with the categories, once we really know where these numbers are going to sit, it should be, not rubber stamped, but close to that going forward. Is that a safe assumption or not?
I think you're always going to have changes. Keep in mind that we're making categorical adjustment to a budget that was established in March 2014. This was past the interim superintendent. This was from the old superintendent, our budget. So, we're making adjustments to something that was made over 15 months ago, and a lot of things have changed. A lot of people have changed, a lot of the personnel cost factors have changed. So, a lot of things have changed. There will be maybe some stabilization going out, but we contend that it will always require categorical adjustments toward the end of a fiscal year, because our original budget plan has been made, you know, more than a year ahead of time.
Okay. And I wanted to ask that, just to get the information, make sure it's out, because if we're going to continue to see that, that's fine, but I don't want, because I kind of thought, once we did get into categories, we'd say, "Okay, we knew going in how much we wanted for instruction and administration and transportation and all that," and then it'd just be a matter of tweaking as we go forward, or if you had some type of one-off on anomaly, then you would do something. But that's not the case. It could be, or it could not be.
It could be. And I guess with this one, with, I guess, well, he was here, but with me not being here at the beginning of the year, when everything was planned, as we get to the end, and what I didn't want it to seem like we were just spending funds, but I wanted to make sure that I met with administration at the school, as well as in the office, to find out what our specific needs were.
Right.
So, from there, we looked at it, and before we presented it to our board, we had to make sure that we were following the, everything with transformation, to make sure that we had the co-ops or identified the MWBE, to make sure that we could spend the funds. So, I think it will level out some, because now, we'll have an idea of what we want to do going forward within the year, and it'll be planned out. But as Mr. Steele stated, there will always be some adjustments when you're dealing with categorical, because when you're dealing with, these are rough estimates, and we don't know exactly what the numbers will be once a project may be bid it out and so forth. So, toward the end of the year, we will have this type of dialogue.
And I think one of the biggest challenges is, you can never overspend your budget, so you've always got to pull back on the throttle to make sure you have a safe landing every time. And so, and if you have too much, you're going to get beat up because you didn't spend it all, or you didn't do it. So, it's a tough act, and I recognize that. And that's why I wanted to make sure that I at least ask that, so it's out in the public and they understand that you're always going to have some fluctuation there. I think with technology and those type of things, that's, no one can ever predict where we're going with that thing, but... Any other questions for the superintendent or the... Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor?
I'd just like to say, I'm really pleased with this extra $3 million in technology, and iPads and computers. I mean, I think that's where we've all wanted to see our tax money go, and I'm thrilled that you're able to do that.
Thank you. And a lot of it also is with the infrastructure within the buildings, to make sure that it's, the buildings are wired for the technology that we're bringing in.
Good.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Just, can you give us a overview of the 2.6 and what, not detail, what it's going to be?
On the operation side?
On the operation side? A lot of that includes the boiler over at Norcom. It includes some locker and bleacher and security cameras. There's some HVAC controls that it includes. I'm trying to think of a couple others, but...
The security, the cameras.
Right. Stormwater projects, which actually, we're paying the city for to do for us, a lot of those were on backlog, that we're trying to correct some of the flooding issues that were talked about earlier. And those are the main ones.
Okay. That's my question.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you all very much.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions on that item? Okay. The next item is an update on Willett Hall. Let me ask Nita if she would come and introduce this.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor. Give her a minute to load the presentation up, but I'm really pleased to provide you guys with an update on Willett Hall. We contracted the Livest Group. We contracted the Livest Group to conduct an evaluation of Willett Hall, and this started back last year. But before I start, I want to introduce John Spencer, who's the principal that we work with from the Livest Group, and also, another member of the Livest Group, Bill Milligan. We've worked with them in the past. Okay. The Livest Group, we selected them because they actually conducted the renovation of the Addicts Theater and the Ogden Hall at Hampton University. I'll turn it over to John. I am going to bring everybody up to speed on the Willett Hall problems. Dennis Bagley, where's Dennis? Dennis gave counsel a presentation back in early 2013, and I'll only take just maybe a couple of minutes to bring everybody up to speed. And then, I'll turn it over to John Spencer, who'll give you the details of his evaluation.
Okay.
As everyone is aware, Willett Hall has quite a few historical issues. The main one that reached the paper, I think, a couple of years back, was the standing water that's under the building. It was designed with that standing water. And as a result, the standing water has severe termite damage. We're actually not able to treat the termites in the building. When we have the swarms, we call our pest management company, and they tell us to just get a can of Raid and spray it. At this point in time, when you, they can't put any more pesticides in the groundwater, because you can't really treat the building, because everything is water underneath the building. And their pump's going 24/7 to keep that water pumped out from under the building. We also need to replace the fire pump for the sprinkler system and HVAC replacement, as well as roof replacement. Just some pictures of the water underneath the building. You can see that, the dark area, where you see sort of the reflection is the water. And this is just one of many pictures of the termite damage that's occurring. Now, the reason why we decided to conduct a detailed evaluation was because there was a lot of discussion about having, and it came, a lot of it came from the audit as well, we needed to have Broadway plays. We needed to bring better performances into the theater. We wanted to have symphony and orchestra performances. We wanted to have a lecture series. And we also wanted to continue to support the local and regional stage performances. But there was another issue as well. We really needed to bring our facilities up to the 21st century, the stage lighting and the sound system, as John Spencer will talk about. But for our patrons, for performers, and for the employees, the amenities are pretty bleak. So, as a part of the evaluation, we began working with the Livest Group in August of last year, and we wanted to conduct a thorough evaluation. That cost was prohibitive. It was $122,000. We wanted to look at the theater, all the way down through water damage, remission and control, through roofing and termite damage, have a thorough assessment done of that building to see what it's really going to cost to bring this building into a, and make it a viable venue, not just to put a Band-Aid over it, but what is it going to take to make it a viable venue? Because it was so cost prohibitive, we said, "Okay, let's take a look at what we really, really need, and what can we get from regional data, as well as from their expertise." So, in December, we decided to just evaluate the theater, and they have a theater consultant that they work with out of Manhattan, Connecticut. And that consultant is called Next Stage Design, and they're an international theater consultant. So, we said, "Okay, let's contract you guys to work with your theater consultant, and then Livest would use regional data, as well as historical data," because Dennis had conducted an evaluation of the water. And let's get a total cost of what it's going to take to make this a viable venue, not just stick a Band-Aid on it, or not make it pretty, and it's still rotting from the bottom out. At this point, I'll turn it over to John Spencer. He's going to talk about exactly the details of that study, and what they found, and what it's going to cost us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members.
Good evening, sir.
We wanted to take a look at this, and we'll start out looking at some building comparisons. And the reason for this is to have an idea of what your competition is in the area, and give you a good idea of what it would take in order to bring this up to where you want it to be. One of the things we had to keep in mind is, we're talking about patron expectations and satisfaction. And if we look at Willett Hall, seating capacity is 19,24,924 square footage, 56,000, and the farthest seat from the stage is 110 feet. Chrysler Hall, on the other hand, has a few more seats, larger square footage. We didn't know the farthest seat. Ferguson has less seats and more square footage, and they're 120 feet from the edge of the stage. Sandler, you see, there is much smaller. But one of the things we also want to look at is the kind of impressions that you get when you go in, because people have high expectations when they're paying a lot of money for a Broadway show. The current entry to Willett Hall, and this is a seating. As you look at that, you can say, "That doesn't look too bad." But if you look at this, this is Chrysler Hall, which is your closest competition, and this is the interior of Chrysler Hall.
Doesn't look too bad.
This is the outside of Ferguson as you approach it, and this is the inside of Ferguson. Doesn't look too bad either.
Doesn't look too bad either, no.
And here is Sandler Center, and the interior Sandler Center. So, that you can see that when you pay money to go to one of these venues, then you have high expectations when you get, and not just get inside, but it starts outside. So that, some of the additional constraints, and let us start looking at it here. Let's start with the parking lot. You're approximately 250 feet from the front of the building. It's almost 100 yards. You share parking with the hospital, and there's a conflict there, because they will be using it. Willett Hall would be using it. But, and you need to have a more welcoming feeling as you approach it. The entry and the front of the house, there are issues there. Right now, it's used for circulation, ticketing, concessions, restrooms. Our consultant said that it is significantly deficient in the kinds of facilities that we should have in the entry and the front of the house. There are places where you'll have a log jam when you go in for ticketing, and then, there's no place there, and I'll mention that as we go down a little further. For the lobby and lounge, you have no place for pre-performance activities. When you have your intermission, you don't have the usual activities that can take place at that time. And then, when you have the after performances, that's not possible, because the space is not there. ADA access and compliance issues are there. We're short on the number of seats that are required for the handicap, and if you were trying to get anyone up to the second floor, whether in a wheelchair or not, that is difficult, because the only way up is by stair, so that really, an elevator is needed. Isle width is in there, because in the old building, the aisles start out wide at the back, and they narrow as they go down. That's against the current code. That would have to be corrected, so that they are equal all the way down, allowing equal access, so that you can go either way, back, forward. access, so that you can go either way, back, forward, sideways, whatever, in order to get to the exit. If any of you are familiar...
Mr. Spencer, you're saying so from the rear? As I enter into Willett Hall, the aisle way is wider? As I go toward the stage going down, it gets narrower?
Yes, it does.
Is that right? I didn't know that either.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the pitch going down is something that has to be spoken to. We think that we can get by with the pitch, but we do have to do something about the width. That also has something to do with handicapped access. And the number of handicapped seats that are in there need to be increased. That is one. Balcony access is limited to the stairs. We need an elevator in order to get up and down, to get equipment up and down. The sound systems and the sound control rooms are on the upper level, and you'd have to have access to that. The number of restroom facilities, it's interesting that there are more restroom facilities, or more units for men than for women. It's usually the other way around. We found in the evaluation that we can probably use the number of facilities that we have for the men. We need to triple the number that we have now for the women. There's just a knock there if you plan to keep the same number of seats and to have the kind of facility you're looking for. Seating width and depth, people are wider, seats are wider, spaces between seats is getting deeper. We feel, however, that we can get by with that, but there is the possibility, as we make some of the corrections, that we could add some larger seats to accommodate the people who would require them. There is no sound system currently that is being rented. And Broadway shows tend to bring a lot of their stuff, but they expect to have the backup material there as you, as they come in. Inadequate electric service. I checked with the MEP people today. The entry right now is probably sufficient, but once you pass that point, everything on the inside would probably have to be upgraded. There's inadequate electric service. The back of the house is one of the problems. It was a theater that was designed for use by high school students. We don't have the usual facilities that you would have for Broadway shows. That is, dressing rooms, green rooms, the restrooms that are required, storage. You don't have the kind of workroom that you need for the building of sets and all of that kind of thing. So that, and there's also, when they have these traveling shows, there are separate facilities for the performers and the crew. So that we would have to duplicate many of the things that are there now as we are bringing them up to date. As you go into the existing restrooms, you really can't get into them. And there's no way that they could be used for handicapped folks.
Now, you have those, those things exist at the other competitors, the Sandler Center, at Ferguson?
Everything.
They've all got separate rooms and green rooms and all that in the back?
They have all the facilities that are needed to satisfy the Broadway shows as they come in. I've been in, I know that they have green rooms. I haven't counted them all, but I have been through them, a couple of them, and I know that they have them. And then, of course, inadequate house lighting, stage lighting, rigging, and all of that kind of thing. The fire safety curtain, and this is something you might want to address right away. One probably is currently of asbestos, which is not good, and we don't think it's working at this particular time. So, that is something. Some of these things, you're going to have to do no matter what. If you continue to exist and don't do anything else, there are some changes that are going to have to be made. You need the new roofing. You need the new HVAC. You need the new electrical update. You need to do something about some of the toilets, and you definitely have to speak to the handicapped.
The electrical piece, you didn't speak to that? It was just, we don't have the proper load, or?
Your electric entry is good, but a lot of the work in there is old. And so, it's going to have to be brought up to date. And the things that are being used at this particular time is going to cause a different drain on the existing entry. For example, the new lighting systems that are going to come in, and all of those things. Because right now, you don't have the kinds of lighting that we should have. The house lighting, stage lighting, and all of that is going to have to be...
So, if we said do that, then we clearly would have to increase the electrical capacity to be able to accommodate it?
He doesn't think so at this particular moment.
Doesn't he?
He thinks that because it was just done a few years ago.
What about for the HVAC?
Well, the HVAC, we've not looked at that at this particular point. But we're hoping that all of that, with the new service that was brought in a few years ago, that there's enough capacity to cover the changes. But that will be a part of the additional study. This study did not cover lighting, those things. We just looked at it to tell you what the requirements are going to be, what it is you're going to need. Now, here is some of our results in terms of square footage analysis. If you look at the existing square feet, the front of the house, and look at, go down, 7,800 square feet. We're going to renovate 7,800, but we want to build new 7,120 for the new total. And the reason for that is that for all of the things that you're going to need in terms of new office space, et cetera, you're going to have to use or add to, and add to, the building as it exists. Which means that we looked at the one-story addition that is attached to the building with the idea that some of that would be demolished, and some of it would be retained, and then we would add to that.
That's the rear, the one-story? That's the old gym, I mean, the band room?
Well, I think that there were classrooms down there.
Yeah, okay.
And it's along the side and around the back. So, there are classrooms, there is a mechanical room, and then there is the band room that is on the back. But those would all be either demolished or rehabbed. Most of the restoration is going to take place along the back. The new stuff is going to take place on the side. It would be the left-hand side as you go in. Now, a lot of that has to be done, because as you go down to the lower left-hand corner at the stage, you go down the stairs in order to go out. But there is a difference in level. Once you get out there, you're in the corridor for the old room. There's no exit from there. So that, that is a fire hazard. It would have to be spoken to. So, if we look at all of the existing square footage, we're rehabbing 110 on the, for renovate, 18,000. Rehabbing, but nothing new. Stage support, we're adding, nothing new, but we are renovating and rehabbing some there. The amount goes up. Performer support, we are going to renovate, but we're adding, or rehabbing, really, 1,200 square feet. Multi-purpose room is one that has to be used to help satisfy the performers, and can be used, of course, when there's no performance there. And that's going to be a new 2,500 square feet. Administration, you see that a lot of that is rehab. For a total, the existing 31,000, when you go across, by the time you do renovations, rehabbing, and addition, it ends up at 45,000. In the abandoned area, we've not changed. Total there, 41,000, ends up at 45. But when we get through the total gross square footage, existing is 56,000 square feet. We will end up at 65,000 square feet, which we'll be able to handle all of the things that we've been talking about. In order to give you some idea of what the cost might be, the remediation of water has been in there for some time. That is, if you're going from a low to a high, we're using anywhere from, I think we said 250 per square foot up to about 300, a little bit better. And 250 to 350 per square foot, so that we have the cost of water remediation, cost of renovation, rehab, and new construction. We have the cost of changes to the stage and the theater. This comes out of the report. These are theater, stage changes. Not anything to do with the rest. That's just for the stage and its equipment. A contingency of 10 to 15 percent, and then A&E for 8 to 10 percent. So that a rough estimate, estimates, low at about 24,800. High, 24 million, excuse me, 8,000. Wish you could get it for 24,800. 24 million, 8,000. You can't buy a car for 24,000. And then 33 million for high, using the 350 per square foot. This does not include site work and any of the additional parking that would be needed, landscaping, and all of that kind of thing.
Just out of curiosity, did we ever look at what it would cost to nuke that thing and build a new one? Nita?
Yes, we, there's one more slide that I had here, and I'm not sure why it's not coming up. We wanted to talk about. And that was actually the decision point. And that's where we, this is where we get to next. And thank you, John, I appreciate it. And when John had mentioned earlier about what it's going to take just to bring the current building up to a state of good repair, it's going to be about 15 million. That's not with any of the upgrades, any of the renovation work. It's about 15 million with the things we really need to do. And so, we are at a decision point at this point in time. Do we keep it as is? We repair it? The bottom of that bucket is 15 million just to have what we currently have in a good state of repair. The roof, HVAC, okay, and getting rid of some of the fire issues. Or do we close the facility? The next option to consider long-term is, do we move forward with a design professional for repair and upgrade? We can go back and give Livest the rest of that $122,000 for him to come back and specifically tell us what the load needs to be. But we figured for the 32,000 and the estimate on the theater, and the detailed analysis with the theater, with the regional estimates and his expertise in building assessment, we felt like 32,000 was an initially good investment. But we can go back and have them to complete the rest of the evaluation, to get back to the same point.
Well, I think I'm concerned, and I think we expressed a concern about a year ago when Dennis made a swag at what you just narrowed in a little. To be able to invest and put these type of dollars into the current design with the standing water and all of that, I think that would be a terrible mistake. I just, I just don't know if we want to go and pump in 20 or 30 million dollars, and we've still got this. And I don't know what other system we could install with that water there without putting in some well points and pumping all that out, and coming up with some other more solid design. Because you put that money in there, you're still going to be faced with that dampness and all of that 10 years down the road. And none of us will probably be here then, but somebody's going to be frowning on, I guess I'll speak for myself. But, but, frowning upon that amount of money there. So, I'm concerned with, the core issue is the foundation and the design concept that that building was built under, and that standing water in constant movement. And until that's addressed, and we get that under some type of, Mr. Spencer, and I don't know if you've even looked at that, that standing water and how it was designed, the honeycomb design, I mean, we went through a whole gyration of that, and I don't know. I'm sure you didn't crawl under there, but...
No. But this is a big issue, man. I agree with everything you said. But if I heard Ms. Joseph right, well, the termites are always going to be there.
Until you get rid of the water, the termites will be there. Because our company, they won't even treat it anymore.
So, why would I spend 15 million dollars if they still have termites?
Look, if I could speak to your question...
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
No, I have not been under that building, and I'm not totally familiar with the system that we're talking about. But we did have that kind of problem. We did the dining hall onto Hampton University campus, and that's fairly recent. And of course, there are methods that we use now for waterproofing, for pumping, systems that go around the perimeter of the building to carry the water away from it. So, I, you know, I'm not going to put my head on the chopping block at this moment and say that we can do it, but I think it can be done. But there is a cost that goes along with that. So that we would have to investigate that and see whether the 5 million that's in there will cover it, or whether there's additional funds required.
I think you told us enough. We don't need to spend the rest of it.
There's one other thing, too. We talked with IMG, who's the contractor, the promoter that handles Entellos. And we said, okay, if we went out for bid, because their contract expires when? Next year?
This year.
This year. We said if we go out for bid and we added Willett Hall to the grand scheme of things, for Entellos, and have someone promote Willett Hall, would you guys even bid on it? Then they basically said, no. We would not want Willett Hall, primarily because, not just because of the facility, but it lacks the synergy. It's hard to get to. The location is not the greatest location. It should be in a downtown location where it's easily accessible. And they just said, no, we would not, we would not want to promote that venue just because of the location, even if it were perfect. The synergy's not there.
Then maybe we should include it in next year's bid, so they won't bid on it. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
I think this is a question for Mr. Spencer. If we didn't have any facility of this nature right now, and we came to you and said, you know, we think we'd like to have a Ferguson-type facility. And here we are in Portsmouth, we got Chrysler Hall across the river. It seems, I know Willett has a lot of sentimental value to folks, and it supposedly has the best acoustics in the region, and this great stage you can put an elephant in. But would you say, yes, Portsmouth, you should build a 1,900-seat theater? Or would you say, you know, a 1,000-seat theater would be great, or a 500-seat theater would be great? For the, for where Portsmouth is located relative to the others?
If you're trying to do Broadway shows, then you're going to need somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,900 to 2,000 seats. That's what your competition has all around. That's the size that sells very well. So that you would need something of that nature.
Okay. And the cost would be between 250 to 350 dollars per square foot, not including parking.
How old is Willett Hall?
In the 50s, I think.
Oh, the 50s. It's 68 years old, 68 years old.
Now, Dennis, I see you over there. It's kind of a minute. When we first brought this thing up, we were not aware of the design and the foundation, and we were all running around Chicken Little. We got water underneath there. Nobody knows where the leak was. We thought it was a sprung, and then we looked into it, and it was designed for that. And that was acceptable at that time, right?
That's correct.
And so, the water is standing, or is it slowly moving?
It's the water table. When the water table changes, the water level under the building changes. And it's my understanding, when the building was built, what they did was, they, because there was peat at, and the geo-evaluation showed that was peat at like 15 feet, 16 feet, they dug material out, built the building on it, so they took some of the weight off the ground, so the building weight would take up the material that they removed. That meant the water, the level under the building was much lower than it is outside of the building. And then they built the building on top of it. Well, when the water table began to rise and go down, I mean, you can measure that on a daily basis, and it changes depending on where the water table is. And we've got pumps under there now running, and they run 24 hours a day, and they, the water still stands under the building because it's groundwater. And we originally gave you three options. We had McPherson Structural Engineers come in along with the geo folks, and they gave us three options. One was to sheet pile completely around the building down, I'm trying to go on memory, it was 25, 30 feet in the ground, so they would get below the water table, and they would sheet pile around the whole entire building to kind of isolate it from the remainder of the groundwater.
And we pump that water out, and that way it'd be...
If you pump it out, the sheet pile would keep it from coming back in, and it would be dry under the building. But the cost of that, the estimated cost was, and again, I'm going on memory, but it was about 20 million dollars, 25 million dollars to do that. They gave us another option, which was to go in and put flowable fill in. But because of that honeycomb design, and some of the places you can't get into, there was no guarantee that that flowable fill would be able to go into those areas. So, the final option that they gave us, and it was right in the 5 million neighborhood, was to go in and cut holes all inside the building, and go inside of each one of those and fill them with sand until they got up above the water table. And that would eliminate the water coming up above ground level.
Now, at its highest point, how far is the water from the bottom of the foundation or the floor?
Well, it's...
I mean, what's your clearance there at worst case?
The theater itself is like a bathtub. It's just a concrete bathtub. And where we have the biggest problems with water intruding inside the building is when it gets up about six foot, seven foot underneath the building.
it gets up about six foot, seven foot underneath the building. There's a square opening in the, in the prop room that's under the stage and then the water will flow over and then it'll come inside the building. And that's happened twice in my career here, for 25 years. So typically that doesn't happen, but everything around the stage stays saturated and that's where the moisture problem comes into play. And that's why the termites are there. And the, our termite, pest control people, so they just can't pump chemicals into that ground because it just flows everywhere and they had no control over it. So we've relegated to treating them with spray when they begin to swarm and that's pretty much our only option at this point until we can get rid of that water. Then we can treat the ground and get rid of the termites, but it's a huge investment and we need some direction on how we'd like to move forward with it.
But now, Mr. Spencer, you talked about the pitch and you think we could stay with the pitch we had. If we were to bring that up, especially with the water table and the height, that would give us a better chance from a moisture perspective or, because it sounds like we just need to turn it...
I think the pitch problem, when we had talked about it, you were going to resolve that by adding an additional, additional square footage along the side.
On the side, yes.
So that, because the pitch is too steep for ADA compliance. So you'd have to add additional square footage and then bring people who are in wheelchairs down through that new square footage to the bottom floor.
Okay. Now, you mentioned a facility you had over at Hampton University. Hampton, Portsmouth, all of us have these same water issue. What system do you have over there and how are you, how are you maintaining the water piece with the facility? Are you moving it, pumping? We've got pumps running 24 hours a day. Same concept or...
Right now, and you may know where the dining hall is located, right there on the front of the river, right? Maybe 25 feet or so from the river's edge. But when we poured the concrete, there was an admixture that was put in that guaranteed it gets wet, it expands and it keeps the water out. So that we did a lot of pumping and everything in the beginning to keep the water out there, cleared the site, and as we poured the concrete, we actually made a waterproof...
A barrier.
A barrier.
Okay.
There are things on the market now that they say you can put on from the inside for buildings that are already in place. I've only tried them a couple of times so that I'm not saying, we're just waiting to see how well they were.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions?
And then just the last two items I had here was, you know, if we wanted to move forward, we could look, I don't know how much debt we can take on to do a renovation, or we can revisit our strategy for Willet Hall. Do we look at somewhere closer downtown to have an entertainment venue? And do we look at maybe a different purpose for the Willet Hall site altogether? So that's pretty much the presentation.
The decision, okay.
Yep. All right. Any other questions?
No. I think we probably, I don't think we need to go any further with them looking at anything else until we come to grips with the fundamental issue here with that facility. Anybody else?
I agree.
Okay. Thank you.
Just know that we have funding for operations and funding for very basic maintenance for the upcoming year, and that's what we've been doing for the last several years. And there's only so many years we can continue to do that, but that's what we at least have through the end of next fiscal year, FY16.
Okay.
Can I...
Yes.
Can you give us, remind me, please, the status of Churchill Bridge, where we are on the...
Yes. As a matter of fact, I had queued James up. James, if you would come to the podium to talk about a couple of issues that we had time tonight. Churchill Bridge was one, Turnpike Road was the other, and then the latest on the seawall. So we have a little bit of time.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Member of City Council. I'm going to start off with a quick update on the seawall. As you know, last week we closed down the portion of seawall between the two inlets while we're completing our underwater inspection. That inspection should be completed by the end of the month. We've looked at Admiral's Landing Renaissance piece, we've looked at the piece from High Street Landing down to City Hall, and now we're down there looking at the Old Holiday Inn piece. The preliminary results from that City Hall inspection, looks like we may have to close that down until we can come to some decisions about how we want to go about addressing the things we find in this report. We're currently, City, along with our design team and our underwater inspectors, are sorting through those inspection results and we're examining emergency repair options and we're also altering our current design schedule so that we can incorporate some of these change conditions and sort of make the best use of our funds and incorporate as much as the emergency repair as we can to that final design. And we're also keeping in mind what these impacts are going to be to the overall budget for the project. And also we're got some of our design professionals that have experience with this underwater kind of work, looking to see if there are any other type of funding available, whether it be federal, FEMA, what, what have you. So we're looking at all options right now. With that, I'll take any questions on the seawall.
What was the fix to the section that we did right there by Admiral's Landing about a year or so ago? Was it just as simple as going in and adding some new pilings underneath for stability or was it a corrosion-resistant piece? What do we do in that piece and why can't we just do the same thing in these other areas?
We have looked at that and I'll ask Yusuf to correct me if I'm wrong.
Because what I'm thinking, we didn't get one section. We know what we did to put a fix on it. Why are we doing more evaluations on what to fix? I mean, I can see we need to look at how bad the corrosion is and all of that, but we already know what the fix is because we've done a section of it, correct, Yusuf?
Yes, sir.
Correct. We're trying to determine the extent of how much we'll have to replace and how soon right now. And like I said, these are change conditions from our last inspection report two years ago. That last inspection report said Holiday Inn site, Admiral's Landing Renaissance piece, City Hall piece. This new inspection says Admiral's Landing Renaissance piece, City Hall piece, Holiday Inn piece. And so that, that's a change condition over the past two years and we're just trying to figure out the best way to approach this. And that repair that was done prior to is the primary option on the table right now, but we're looking at all options.
Okay. What was that repair? If you can brief us real quick. What did we do?
We replaced...
And how much life did we gain on this?
The life expectancy of the repair that we did is about 50 years plus with the proper maintenance. We did, we did new sheeting, sheet piles and new battered piles with that design. We based it on the older, on the old design that we had in there. And at that, at that time, the old piles had rusted out at the mud line. And after the failure, we repaired it in kind and we used different kind of steel and hopefully it will last a little longer with the proper maintenance.
It's a little bit beefier section.
A little beefier section.
Yes, sir.
Now, how long was that section?
About 120 feet.
About 120 feet. And what did we spend on that repair?
About 1.2 million.
About 1.2 million?
1.2, 1.2.
Okay. All right. So we could, are we looking close in that same price range? I know that's been a couple of years ago, so the numbers...
I'm not sure. The original estimate for replacement from the Holiday Inn down, down to here was about 20 million.
From the Holiday Inn all the way down?
All the way down.
Right, but we're not going to bite this whole elephant.
No, we weren't planning on biting it all. We were designing it all together so we could do as much as possible with the funding available to get some sort of economy to scale.
Okay. How long did that first patch take? How long did it take us to do that first piece?
Couple of months, two, two and a half months or so.
About two and a half months, okay. So if we were to break this up, and I think the first initial diagram that we got had it broken up into different sections that we could probably take down a section, do that same repair. You say we're gaining about 50 years on the life side?
At least.
At least, so with maintenance.
Yes.
But yeah, if we could break it down in those 150-foot sections to bite off, if we're only talking a couple of million per 150-foot section, then...
That's what we're looking at right now.
Okay.
At that time, it cost a little extra because we had a failure.
Okay.
With this now, we don't have a failure yet. Hopefully it'll be a little less.
Okay.
But we do have that programmed in the CIP. We do have two years of, if I remember correctly, three years of improvements in the CIP for the...
Three years of improvements, meaning we can do...
There should be about 6.5, maybe 7 million once you got it...
Over those three years.
Once the CIP is for this, because that's what we're targeting the design for.
So six or seven million, you're talking another 350-foot sections. We've already got into the CIP. It's just a matter of what, doing it?
Potentially, based on preliminary estimates, you could potentially, if this emergency repair doesn't, doesn't come out with a crazy number, you could do that, you could do that piece that's blocked off right now.
Okay.
Potentially.
Any other questions? Yes, sir. You got something?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you.
Church and Bridge.
Oh, excuse me. Who did that work on, that first piece?
It was Crofton Diving.
Crofton Diving.
Crofton.
Okay. Yep, that's a Portsmouth company here.
Okay. In the proposed VDOT six-year improvement program, we received 8.2 million dollars in funding from the state. It's all state funds, no federal ties. At the same time, VDOT has also recommended approval of our current revenue sharing application, which that is for 5 million dollars from the state. The city would have a 5 million dollar match. So coming out of this year's state budget is about 8 point, 18.2 million dollars in approved funding, which leaves our project approximately 3 million dollars short. We just received comments back from VDOT on our 60% plans. So we'll work as a design team to address those comments. Our next step will be the design public hearing, where the public get a chance to look at the design, make comments, also look at the environmental document. It's an, it's an official public meeting, so there will be court reporters taking, taking minutes and notes. And there's a formal response that we actually provide back to all the citizens that make comments. They're all part of the record and they go back. Once we get that...
When is that?
We haven't set that date yet. Yeah, we'll have to get those comments back on a 60% plan before they'll give us to go ahead for that advertisement. It'll be a public meeting most likely at TCC campus, similar to what we've done for some of our other large projects. Then it'll move into the right-of-way clearance phase. There are three to five properties that are going to be affected, that would just some small right-of-way takes, just because the bridge is going to be a little wider because of the bike lane and some of the other federal requirements. There are two to three more VDOT reviews, and so we're looking at construction sometime towards first part of FY17 and two years for construction. I'll take any questions.
You say we were short, how much? About a million?
About 3 million.
About 3 million short. And that's for the 60% match?
That is for total project funding.
Total project funding, and that's all in on our, our part?
Um, part from the state, part from us. So there's, there's a pretty good chunk of state money on the project right now.
Yeah, but we got to belly up another 3 million.
Well, we could do revenue sharing for that 3 million and they pick up 1.5 and we pay the other 1.5. That's still a viable option.
Okay. That's what I was asking.
Okay. Last update, Turnpike Road. That project will be starting next, on June 1st, so it's sometime next week. I forget which day that is. VDOT have their contractor ready to go. That contractor's Evie Williams. It's a 23.4 million dollar project. It extends from Dixie Avenue, which is that street right behind the CVS, down to Constitution. You're going to end up with a two, that two-lane roadway will be widened to four lanes, center turn lane, sidewalks, curving gutter. All the public utilities in that corridor are going to be replaced. Water sewer, the 24 HRSD main, there's substantial storm drainage that'll be replaced. The work will occur in phases. The first phase is from Constitution to Meander. Second phase is from Meander to Romanesque. The next phase from Romanesque to Phillips, and from Phillips to Howard, from Howard to Frederick, and then from Frederick to Dixie. There will be full closures up until the point where it gets to Howard. Once it gets to Howard Street, there's a lot of coordination that'll have to occur between the Kroger, the, I forget the name of the housing that's right there.
Seaboard Square.
Seaboard Square. And the proposed, whatever proposed development's going to go in. And so then, once you get through that intersection right there, so those won't be full closures. There'll be some sort of modified lane closures with detours.
But that'll be on the tail end of the project?
That'll be towards...
And we're looking at starting this when? June 1st?
June 1st.
And down by Frederick Boulevard, about what time?
Be towards the end, probably within the last six months. And this project is anticipated to be complete in May 2018.
2018. And we're crossing Frederick and going to the street just behind the CVS? That's where the endpoint is of that phase of it?
Make sure you coordinate Frederick with St. Mark.
Okay.
Watch out.
I got a note down here.
But by 2018, the stuff on 264 from the MLK expansion should be finished, right?
It should be. They should be, the last piece of that should be rehabbing the existing Midtown Tunnel. That should be just about completed, be somewhere in that, in that same time. That's 2018 deadline there.
Okay. Right? Another question, sir?
Where are we from building the deal at?
Mr. Manager, while we're on projects, can we get an update on the behavior of healthcare building? Where we are, we don't need to do it tonight, but I know this, we've, we've slipped some dates and I keep riding by and thinking the lights are going to stay on and they keep going out. And I know doing a windshield drive isn't a fair assessment, but we need to get a firm update on that facility and...
You might check back through your memos. I think we sent one out about two or three weeks ago. The key delay right now has to do with the, the masonry exterior. There's some problems with it and we want to get it right before we accept it. But we'll, we'll pull that memo out, update it and see if there's anything new we can get you and get it out.
And outside of that, anything else that need to be done? So once we do get that piece done, we can start the process of moving into that facility?
Oh, yes. It's, it's actually the, the office equipment, all the, all the interior equipment is done